There's some, some.
Two questions, what is, what is lighting source? Two fifty-six and roller trailer. Two fifty-two.
Just to be sure I'm completely accurate, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Gallus on both of those items.
The light sources, lighting that we use at night when we're doing water main breaks.
Okay.
Was there another one, I apologize, I didn't hear.
Roller and trailer.
Two fifty-two.
Yeah, it's the, it's a roller machine for hot patch.
You know, before John Kramer left, they were talking about a traffic controller for SIG nine. I see that you don't have that in here.
Do we have that? Airboard, we bought one.
Okay.
Airboard.
Okay. Evidently you bought one.
Good.
So unless there's any other question on the equipment or the police department equipment?
No questions on the automotive, automobiles?
Might be.
Everybody knows where they all go. Okay, continue. No, I think he was just scratching his head.
Well, that's it.
One eighty-six?
That's what he asked.
Did we get? Pardon me?
I just have one question to the police chief. On the one account, police operating equipment, what's a fifty-four thousand? I mean, could you freshen my memory what that's for?
Sure, that, that was the things that was listed in the initial CIP presentation, but they do include equipment for the new vehicles. This is because Ford got rid of the Crown Victoria, so we do. You don't.
Oh, it's special equipment that they have to put in squad cars?
That's one of, there's, there are several things, but that's, that's the first thing. Radios for inside the cars, and we're actually looking for a used radio source. And if not, we just became aware of grant funding last week to maybe not have to do that for the radios, that we can get a grant for that, so we're working on that. That's due at the end of the month, so we're, we are working on that. Some replacement of flashlights for the squad cars over a three-year period to change to LED lights. We are looking to install AR-15 rifles in our cars that currently don't have them. That would include the detective vehicles, and also outfit the patrol squads with new sighting systems that are called optics, that are not the typical iron sight, but they allow for more tactical deployment. We also have sim munitions. What that is, is that's training equipment that basically, it shoots projectiles that we can do completely realistic training with each other. Right now, we're borrowing equipment from other agencies to do rapid deployment training for violent, you know, in-progress incidents, and quite honestly, there's nothing more realistic than having a projectile come at you and, you know, be training under stressful circumstances, which is what we would encounter in the field. Also included in that is our bulletproof vest replacement program.
That's a grant, though, right, part of it?
We get fifty percent reimbursement on the grant from that. We're on a five-year replacement schedule, 'cause that's all that the vests are good for. We replace seven vests a year. We do have a mandatory vest-wearing requirement for anyone that's on regular street patrol, so we do utilize those a hundred percent, it's not optional.
We can't use the old ones up here, can we?
No. We, we do use them for training issues and, but really, they become unoperational after a few years of all the weather, weather exposure and that. Also in that equipment is a replacement schedule for our tasers. Those are electronic pieces of equipment that are out in the weather all the time. We do do regular training with those, and that also included replacement cartridges and, and digital power magazines and all that.
I totally, I totally understand the rest, but the one question I have is that replacing the LEDs, defibrillators? 'Cause we haven't done that.
Yes, we, those have been under regular maintenance, and we had to replace some of the battery packs this year, but according to our servicer, we still have several years of life left in those. So those are undergoing regular inspection. You know, in the next year or two, we might, we might have to really look at replacing those.
I knew they were getting towards their lifespan.
Yeah, we did cycle some out of regular use, but we do have enough for, for regular patrol use.
Holman Zara.
It's for Greg. Greg, do we have someone in our department that looks for grants?
Yes, we do. We, we all kinda do some looking. We're, we're a part of a number of distribution lists, be it policeone.com. We just received some from the 911 board. Our communications supervisor went to a grant writing school, so he's attempted to get some grants. And then we look for grants through IDOT, traffic enforcement grants, grants.gov. There's a number of them out there that we're consistently looking for. You know, the, the most recent one was about a week and a half ago, which is gonna be some radio equipment for our squad cars.
It's almost by committee, then?
Yes, it really is.
Mr. Wilson. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless there's any other questions with that? We'll go into land acquisition fund. You know, there's no expenditures currently budgeted out of this fund, but when the city does purchase any property, we do run those costs through this fund. And so we transfer the money in from the general fund and then expend it out of this fund. So the properties we bought on Commercial Street this year, as you'll notice on page one eighty-eight, there is that, that five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in there for those, purchase of those properties. So, you know, this fund is something that typically we can't, two things. One, we can't specifically always anticipate what properties we're gonna buy. Another reason is we don't wanna also specifically put in an amount that we're willing to pay for a property, 'cause we don't wanna specifically tip our hand to the other side, kinda give away our position. So there's a couple of different reasons for.
Any questions? None. Good. Computer parking fund.
Sure, commuter parking. Obviously, this is the parking lot and the train station.
Can we just skip that one unless there's any questions?
Any questions from anybody? It's a good one to skip, okay. Water, sewer, capital. No, I'm sorry. Sanitation. There's no, nothing really to talk about, is there? We just wanna talk. Did you have a question about it? Just kinda speed things up? Water and sewer capital projects?
Sanitation is next.
Oh, sanitation, yes, I did.
Sure. Sanitation, you know, I mean, this is where we bill, bill out the garbage service that the city provides, and then we pay ARC for those bills. The only thing aside from that that falls under here is clean air counts. Aside from that, this fund is pretty much money in, money out. So any increases, just contractually obliged by our ARC contract.
Questions? None? I guess you can go to the next accountant.
Sure. Water and sewer capital projects. Again, this fund was covered in the CIP meetings back in January. The significant increase here is obviously due to the Phase One B of the treatment plant, to be starting late this spring, this summer. You know, the projects, water main replacements, et cetera, that we went through during the CIP process itself.
Questions, comments? Please continue.
Sure, moving on to the water operating fund. You know, the totals on these pages don't include transfers, bond payments, depreciation. This is only the operations of the city. In utilities, a significant increase in utilities was the cost of purchase water from the DuPage Water Commission. The increase in wastewater, kind of, I believe, a number of, not insignificant items, but a number of smaller items. Plan made the same thing, so we'll get to the operating departments as we go through them.
So there's not any questions about that? Please go on to the next. Public utilities?
Sure, utilities. As we mentioned, two weeks ago, the personnel costs are contractually obliged increases, and IMRF were applicable. Yeah, the contractual was an increase in the data. We upgraded to the fiber from the lines that we were on, there was an increased cost associated with the fiber. We have a full year of the lockbox service that's gonna be on there. And then by way of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, we have to do a biannual leak detection test for water accountability, so that's back in there this year. Commodities, DuPage Water Commission. Capital outlay is down, no vehicles are being replaced this year out of the utilities division. Interfund transfer was to the capital projects, from the water and sewer, doing, hate to say less projects, 'cause we have the fifteen-million-dollar treatment plant, but less in the way of water mains, things like that this year, so that's down. And then the other category is up predominantly due to depreciation, credit card processing fees.
Do you have a question, Holman Wazle?
Yes, I have. To the seasonal employees. Is, how many employees is that?
Typically, for that dollar amount, that would be one.
One employee?
Out of the utilities division, correct. That doesn't count the seasonals, the garage that do the, the lawn mowing and things of that nature.
Oh, that's under, in the other one?
Correct.
Oh, I, I'll go back and visit that one, okay. I'm sorry, I got confused.
Okay, any other questions? Please continue.
Wastewater, here's a summary of the wastewater budget. Line items for those begin on page two-ten in the budget book. Contractual, there was a maintenance of sewer main item that was added last year that we're kinda trying to right-size this year and moving forward, trying to get a, a better feel for that number in there. Commodities was a reduction in utility costs. You know, the auctions that we go to for the electric, and the natural gas costs that we've been getting have been favorable over the last couple of years, so we're continuing to trend those numbers downward. Capital outlay, there are two smaller vehicles this year, but last year, we had the televising truck that came in around a little over two-hundred thousand with the trade-in of the old truck. It came out to about two-hundred thousand. So the outlay's down, the two smaller vehicles don't, don't come close to, to that amount. Again, depreciation costs. And then this is the fund, since it's the, the treatment plant is for wastewater, this is where you're gonna see the bond principal and interest payments come out of here. So the bond principal and interest payments for the bonds we issued in February of 2012, those costs are gonna start rolling into this division for the next twenty years. So you'll be seeing those as a regular part of this division's budget going forward.
Questions? None, please continue, maintenance.
So the plant maintenance division, the reduction in personnel in here is when we went through and we were reallocating, reallocating and making sure all the employees were accounted for properly. A couple of the healthcare costs were not allocated properly to this particular division, so we, we resolved that issue. That's predominant driver to that decrease in personnel. And then contractual, there were a number of line items that were being budgeted out there that when we expanded our Excel back a number of years, they just had zeros all the way through there. So they hadn't, there hadn't been anything expended in those line items for three, in some cases, seven years. So we didn't really feel as prudent to budget any money in something that hadn't been spent in seven or, seven or five years in some cases.
Any questions? Please go on to the next.
Storm sewer, the storm sewer maintenance is predominantly the employees from the utilities division. They kinda pulled double duty on this, but there are some specific costs associated with storm sewer maintenance and a couple of specialty vehicles used for storm sewer maintenance. And in the contractual, the vector is one of those special, special items. There was a one-time cost associated with the vector this year that we could pull out next year. It's not every year, I think it's once every four or five years that maintenance needs to be performed on that machine. And then the capital outlay, other equipment, they've kinda been accumulating items over the last couple of years, so they feel that they're at a level where they can, you know, function properly with some nominal equipment replacement, but nothing significant needing to be purchased in this budget year.
Questions? None. Next item. Police pension fund.
Police pension fund. As we've talked about, this, this money isn't technically the city's money, but we do account for it, and we do provide some custodial services for it. I don't know how far down the rabbit hole we wanna get on this. We've talked about the increased levy request. However, the chief and I, as well as the police pension board president, have been very pleasantly surprised, is a good word, with the returns that the fund has been driving this last year. I think they're over what we're anticipating them to be at a funding level at the end of next fiscal year. So unfortunately, the actuarial review is a year behind. So hopefully, this next one that we get for next budget year will reflect those gains that they've made through this year.
Questions?
I do have a question, and, and this budget is pretty significant, or this fund, if you look at it, it's an eighteen-million-dollar fund. And the, the first would be the first line item, the three-one-one-five-five. And we are looking at, I believe that's the levy amount, correct? And it looks like that's gonna stay about the same as we budgeted for in the 2013, so we're budgeting 2014 about the same. However, in the next line down, the contribution from the city, we're looking at more than doubling it. So I, I, when I look at this, I would think it should be more proportionate and not double the cities, but have them escalate accordingly. And along with the third line item, the employees. So if something's gonna double in one, it should double in the other two. So what is the reason for doubling the cities but not the other two? And then as the follow-up, what if we had a malproportionate, increase proportionately?
Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The third line item down, the participant contributions, that's what the officers contribute, and that's set by statute. So there's nothing we can do about that one. The real estate tax levy, again, we have to abide by the rules of the PTAL, the Property Tax Extens Limitation Act. We can't increase it any more than a certain amount. So we're kinda, again, unfortunately, stuck on that one. And so that's why that middle line there is, is the line that unfortunately fluctuates the most. 'Cause what, what they do is the police pension fund requests the funding, and we get what we can get through the property tax levy, and then the council has longstanding want to fund what they request. And so that difference comes by way of that, that line item there. One item of note is that the two oh six this year actually was about a hundred thousand less than the prior year. And so then it jumped up, you know, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand this year. Said good returns one year, not so good the next, now we're gonna have good. So unfortunately, that number gets to be a little peak and valley-like as we go through, go through time. But I'll defer to the police chief for a couple of comments as well.
Hey, I was just gonna mention that, too, that after a good couple of years, the actual contribution between taxes and the city contribution dropped about a hundred thousand. Then, you know, as the market kinda turned a little bit there for a while, it did go up again. But based on how well it's been doing now, I'm not on the board anymore, but I try to stay up with performance. I believe they pulled last calendar year close to ten percent. And this year, they're already off to a substantial, pretty healthy start. And if that keeps up, and they're, you know, you have to be somewhat conservative in your vesting there, but if that keeps up, the cutoff for the actuarial is April thirtieth of every year. So we're working on numbers from last April thirtieth, actually, is when the actuarial's done. Hopefully, next year, if for the next month and a half, things continue at the current pace they are, or they, they keep a lot of those pretty substantial gains that they're sitting on right now, hopefully, that'll definitely positively affect the actuarial study and.
For our next year of contribution.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and, and then in 2012, our actual for levying was seven-hundred-and-forty thousand. Were we able to do that because of the property values from three years ago? It, it looks back at property values, and, and that's why we were able to do the levying of that high? Or, I'll just ask it, why were we able to go that high in 2012?
Yeah, that number, as I was looking at it as you were going through your initial statement, when I'll, I'll say we'll, we'll clean that up. When the auditors go through and they prepare the financials, they roll everything up into one line item, into their property tax line item. So that line item is actually a combination of those other two line items that you see going forward. So what we can do, just for some clarity purposes going forward, is, is split those numbers out, which might help with that. So we take the actual audit numbers, whatever is in the audit, and plug those in there for the actuals. And that, that's what the auditors do, but we can break those out.
Okay, makes sense, yeah. Like, when I was looking at it, it just looked heavily one-way. And then also, under dividend income on the investment side, that we budgeted to bring in ninety-three thousand, nine-eighty-two, and we're projecting zero. Now, I would think there's gotta be some, some dividends unless they're being shown in a different line item.
I would have to defer a little bit on that to the, the pension funds accountant, 'cause they assist with preparation of the, of that budget. Rather than us trying to, as a police department, kinda put it together, we kinda defer to them. I can try get some more information and maybe include that, or pass that on to everyone, why that says zero. I, you know, whether it was rolled up into interest on investments or unrealized, I'm not sure, but I can find out on that.
Okay, and then if, if we need to change the budgeted line item before we approve it, then maybe we would do that? Does that sound about right, we can get the answer before we have to approve the whole budget?
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to them tomorrow to get an answer as soon as we can.
Okay. And that concludes my questions.
Holman Woods.
Yeah, Brad, could you tell me again why the real estate numbers are what they are? What numbers did they roll together? Let's make it a two-part, then. Why didn't we change it if we knew that that was the case?
Sure. The real estate taxes and the line directly below that, the additional contribution from the city, they combined both of those numbers into, into that real estate tax number. So to the point of it going down a hundred thousand, just if you were to add up the four-thirty-two and the two-oh-six, you'd get six-thirty-eight, which is a hundred thousand less than the seven-forty from the year before. Then it goes back up to the nine-forty this year. So, and, and like I said, we, we pulled the number straight out of the, straight out of the CAFR for that. And, you know, unfortunately, when we're doing that, we, you know, we know what they are, and sometimes we're so focused on those three right-hand columns. But we'll just go back and, we'll clean those up for the final version of the draft budget, and then going forward every year, we'll be sure to have those broken up.
And going back to the right-hand side, I'm not sure I caught the explanation of why we went from two-oh-six, four-sixty-four to four-ninety.
Sure. The returns that they had at the end of two fiscal years ago, along with the, the change of the valuation methodology, the funding methodology that the state approved, going from a hundred percent to the ninety percent in, was it 2040 versus a hundred percent in thirty-three, drove that number down somewhat. This year, the returns from the prior fiscal year weren't as, as good effectively from the prior year. There was also a change in the mortality table that drove the costs up some, and a change in the assumed rate of return going forward, they, they reduced that as well.
Okay, that's good.
We can't just take this money as the state does and use it for something else? Okay, next item. Special servicer.
Sure, the special servicer fund, at this point, all four of the active service areas that the city has are effectively just debt service funds. We collect money that the county levies for us as an ad valorem tax on the property tax levies, and then we, we pay the bondholders the principal and interest for those, for the bonds that were sold to fund the special service area. So there's no construction going on in there currently. Like I said, it's just money in, money out. We collect the money from the property taxes, and then we pay the bonds, pay the bondholders twice a year.
Questions? None. Are there any questions about the appendix? I guess we go back to, yes. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, we, we do have a, a slide for the public works topic from last week. That came up, I know there was some.
Why don't you give us the information, and then we can ask questions?
Out of the meeting from two weeks ago, staff worked on taking the input from elected officials and what they wanted to see in this position and perhaps not, did not wanna see in this position. And gonna retool that, you know, this synthesized version. There was a longer-form version in the manager's report last Friday, but this is kind of the, the synthesis of that. And at the bottom, the budget amount, again, is all in cost, including health insurance, FICA, IMRF. You know, there was some, you know, some, obviously, some savings over the prior cost of the position, but that's a synthesis of what came out of the meeting from two weeks ago and subsequent conversations.
So we went all the way down from a hundred-and-eleven thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars to ninety-three thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars for a total savings of eighteen thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. I thought it was mentioned last budget that we were gonna go down to fifty thousand or something. I remember the manager saying we can get down to around fifty thousand, but we're still at ninety, ninety-three?
Sure. You know, the, the fifty thousand was the part-time person last year for the four months. You know, the salary that was tentatively plugged in for this position was sixty-five. However, we haven't finished establishing a range yet. We wanted to, to give you all something else to, to chew on from a, from a structure standpoint, which would help us refine that down. But at this point, I, I think we're saying that it would be no more than sixty-five, and if we can refine it down based on skills, education, et cetera, you know, that, that would be the highest that that number would go, and it could only possibly go down from there.
So you're saying that this person will, not limited to, but will include funding, bidding, contractor relations, project scheduling, and financial tracking, and state and federal reporting and fiscal reporting? So he'll be working for you and the manager, and who else?
Correct. I mean, predominantly, I believe the item that was included, set it would report to the city manager, but certainly working on the funding and the reporting, they'll be working with myself and Mr. Fashoda some. Depending on the nature of the contract, they could actually be working with any of the departments of the city, depending on what the contract was, be it a construction project, HVAC contract, cleaning contract, something like that. So they would have one...
He'd like an assistant manager or an assistant to the manager? No.
We'd have to defer to the manager.
But that's the way it reads. That's what you just said.
Like I say, you know, depending on the nature of the contract, they would have to work with everybody. So, you know, I mean, there would be a person that would be friendly with all countries within the city.
Could it be, kind of condensing the grant requests as well and making sure they go through?
Certainly. As a process of managing the contracts and that federal and state reporting component of it, the grant reporting and writing component of that would certainly fall under that specific caveat to the description, yes.
Okay, well, administer the procedure in professional country. Works closely with the city manager and all of the department heads. Okay, questions? Last item. Mr. Roy Wesley.
So I talked to the city manager briefly about doing a study on wages of what we pay our employees. We did a PAR study before and that PAR study is only from other municipalities. I'd like to get a study done on all the departments, like from the city manager, public works, finance, all the employees, because I always feel that the city employees, they do a good job and everything, but the difference between private sector and public sector, before the private sector paid more than the private, but we, public paid less, but better benefits, and private paid more with less benefits. Those things have changed in the years and I would like to go out and get a study done immediately to see where our wages are. The city manager makes 119,000 dollars. He employed, he's responsible for how many employees with the city? How many employees?
Yeah, there's 98 full-time, so exclusive of himself, 97 full-time, and then there's 41 part-time, including those of you at the dais right now.
So for an example, he's the CEO of the city. We should compare him to CEO of a private company and see where that falls in. The benefits are great with the city and other government agencies, but let's see where it falls in with the private sector too and look at a study of doing both, private and public.
Not sports teams though. Alderman Winger.
I'm not opposed to discussing a study, but I'd like to talk about it at items to be considered at future meetings.
But I'm...
But I don't think we're gonna solve this position with a study, because that takes several months to do or what have you and we're looking to bring this person in sooner than later. So I don't think the study would catch up with our plans here. Thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Not 100% sure, but I don't think we have to recreate the wheel, because I believe the IML did the study a year ago and we could probably get that information from them.
Alderman Wesley.
The IML probably did a study, but that's government. That's not private and...
No, they compared to private.
But even though, that's why these pensions are so high, because they go by what, they go get their own numbers. It's not, it's not a natural number. We need a company that goes out and does it, because these pensions are gained, that's how these pensions are gained way out of whack and who's paying for it? The residents.
Well, right now, the question in front of us is, do we hire this contract manager? Make a motion that we do so? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments? Mr. Mayor.
Just want to make a clarification. Last week, we had a vote. It failed, then came up again. Alderman Woods pointed out, we did not make the motion to repeal the first vote and the second vote went through for point of clarification. So make sure there's only one position that's put in this budget and not two. I think it didn't pass last week anyways, depending on how you're looking at it.
Well, make the motion to be one person.
Only. That previous position that was discussed two weeks ago is null and void. Just want to make sure we're clear.
One person that'll be working with contractors, engineers, architects, surveyors, consultants and general public. We have a, I have a second?
You have a second for me?
Would you call the role, please?
The manager's got a question.
Manager's got a question.
Pardon me?
It'll be one position, but I want to go back to Alderman R. Wesley's comment about the survey. After we're done with this, if I can just say something about it.
When we're done with this.
I just don't want to forget about it.
Please call the role.
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Motion carries five to three, am I correct? Okay, we want to talk about this other item, for now or in the future?
Well, as I, I talked to Alderman R. Wesley earlier this week and he asked about this and I informed him that next fiscal year, we're actually due for an internal salary survey per our policy. So we do need to look at these comparables. He had asked about if we could do that outsourced or if we can do it in-house and I told him we do, we have outsourced it in the past and we can certainly outsource it again, especially if we want to look at this private sector comparison. So if the council's interested in something like that, we could put that in the budget for somewhere between 10,000 and 20,000 based upon some rough quotes we got or we can do what we currently do. So if we want to do something next year, which we need to do, if we want to outsource it, it's up to you guys.
So we might start a new trend in municipalities?
They do it at the county.
Alderman Coles, you have something to say?
Every time we have a contract with the unions, now we set up what the guy, the... People that work for us have their salaries put against the contract of what the union does. I believe we had that several times already. Every time there's a contract, they have a listing of what we did. I remember when Jeff was first applied, he was down at the bottom. He's still at the bottom, I believe, if I know right, if I remember right. The other managers were way above him, but he said he was doing fine. So I just want to say, we've had, we've had several salary checks that I've gone through. And some of these guys got 19, 20, 30, 25 years and so they will be up on the top salary, because some of them have been here for a long time and they deserve the salary, because they work, they'll come out in the wintertime and they'll crawl your streets and they'll dig at night, they'll come and fix the water main. So they, they deserve the salary that they get.
All right, then items to be considered at future meetings. Remote attendance, we'll talk about that March 28th. Code change to stormwater liaison in April. Residential franchise agreement in April. Anything else? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, this was handed to me tonight by Alderman Sizmarzki. The Fenton Dance Team sent him a letter regarding a donation for their dance force. They're going to state championships this weekend. They're attempting to receive 2,000 in donations to help fund their trip. Last year, they placed first in AA hip-hop, second in AA pom, 2011. So this letter came, the staff is just looking for some consensus. It'll be on the, on the dais next week and before you. So they're not looking for all 2,000, according to Alderman Wesley. Sorry, Alderman Sizmarzki. I was looking at Roy down there.
Alderman Winger. We're talking about items to be considered at future meetings.
I first want to make a comment on the budget preparation draft that at the back of the book, I saw on pages 234 and 235, I was very pleased to see a nice accounting of grant information.
Yes, thank you for that.
It's very refreshing to have that and I, it shows our focus and we're not gonna lose sight on them. It's very important. And then secondly, items to be considered at future meetings. If we could just spend an update session on the ones that are remaining, where we're at, where we're at on each of those projects. I realize, you know, the intersection one is a project in itself, but there's a few others that I'd like updates on, just on where we're at on each one. Thank you.
Good enough. We all, thank you for that. Do you need to comment? You want to say thank you back?
No, Alderman Sizmarzki has a point.
Well, I was gonna let him.
If you want to go to him first.
You finished?
You can go to him first and come back to me.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
I wasn't here for the other part of the budget that you guys did, but where does video gaming income fall in there? Is it, was it in there? I didn't see it.
Please answer.
Sure. It was not in the draft of this document. The consensus, I believe, from two weeks ago was to use it for economic development, to air market, to go towards that. We're working through a couple of different things with our auditors to make sure that we were able to track it and account for it appropriately. But that was, I believe, unless, I'm told otherwise, the consensus from the dais last week was for economic development.
Keeping track of the, do we get a check from the state or do we get a check from the...
They're correct. We get a check from the state for their monies.
Is your finger up, Alderman Wesley, or are you just...? Okay, go ahead.
I just want to know where's our next step on this budget, because it's too late getting into it now. I want to go back to one account in the next meeting, or are we finalizing this budget today?
What account? Which account?
Public Works Building for maintenance.
You have a comment on that?
Well, that was gonna be my comment was if we, to progress the budget to the next step for public inspection and approval at the council level, we need a motion to approve it, to move it on, to put it for public inspection, put the notice in the newspaper. So the preference would be to address the one item tonight before we get out of here. Make a motion to approve and then start progressing it towards an April formal approval date at a council meeting.
You have that motion? You're saying we need motion?
No, we need, we know, if he wants to move forward, I think what he's saying is if we want to move forward this budget, pass this budget tonight, as is.
And then it comes to council.
And then it comes to council next week for final blessing and then it gets open to the public 30 days to review. So...
Thought we did that.
No, because that's why I questioned...
All right, let's do it.
...the count on a Public Works building. Let's go back to the Public Works Maintenance Building that you guys tell me that it comes out of a general fund to repair. My concern is if we aren't doing it in building maintenance, I believe.
Page 182.
182?
182.
No, I thought it was 147.
The Public Works Building improvements?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah. The Public Works Administration budgets on 151 and 152.
Right.
For contractual, there's 10,000 for building maintenance this coming year. And for commodities, which is stuff that we would buy and then repair ourselves, there's 5,000. Both of those numbers are fairly consistent with prior year actual expenditures.
Well, my opinion is 10,000 ain't going to get you nothing to bring that building up to go. You know, I don't know what the price is. I don't know what it costs to remodel a bathroom and plumbing and that. I just don't think 10,000 is enough. You guys need to go over there and look at that building, because we aren't going to buy it.
Why don't we, why don't we put 30,000 in there and then if we have to amend the budget later, we'll amend it?
We have 30,000 in the other fund.
You think that's a good start, Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, I think we need to do something.
Okay, I'll make that.
Alderman Woods first and then Alderman Winger.
Mr. Wilson, didn't you say that we have money in a bunch of these line items to fix and repair some of these things and...
Point for one.
I don't know that that's true, because we remodeled an office and magically, you know, found money. I mean, so there's money in there for all these buildings. I don't want to keep adding more on top of more. If there's 20 or 30,000 in there already, do we have a handle on what that number would be?
Correct.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The money for the office you're referring to, in the CAP, this fiscal year, there was 15,000 for building repairs for that building. And so that came out of that pot of money. You know, the last couple of years, there'd been 15,000 each year in there to do repairs on that building over there. I mean, I could go through the CAP numbers to look to see how much of that was actually spent each year, but for the past three or four years, there'd been 15,000 a year put in there to repair, maintain and upgrade that building. And so this year, because absent that office, there hadn't been anything spent out of that line item. So, you know, in looking through it, you know, if there wasn't anything being spent out of there, you know, perhaps they were just in maintenance mode, they had caught up on everything. You know, but if, you know, there's a want to put some money back into the capital fund, upgrade the building or one of these particular line items, we can certainly do that.
Well, the follow-up to Alderman Wesley's point. If I remember correctly, before we started looking at replacing the building, we were gonna redo the concrete floor in there and some drain work and some other things. So if we have given up on finding the building now, given all the other projects that we're funding, maybe we really do need to look at making that line 30, 50,000 so that we could take care of some of those bigger things that need to be done in there.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. I believe it's important to know the direction we're going and I'm not clear whether we're gonna try and move out of that building or not. If I'm not clear, I don't think some others are as well. So the first thing we do, because it was conflicting methodology on what we were gonna do there. And then to follow up, just in addition to dumping money in, that I believe if staff brings forward, we need to do this and here's how much we need, then we say, okay, if we want to agree to it. I don't think we should shove repairs towards staff if they believe that the money they've allocated is enough.
Yeah, the impression I had was that we're going to look for a building and if we find one, that's, would be applicable and we can afford it, we would buy it. So should we continue to put money into this one, Mr. Manager, and then I'm gonna call for adjournment?
The last time this was discussed, the council decided to not abandon the search for a new Public Works facility or the desire to have one or admit that we don't need one. It was, let's wait until the treatment plant expansion is further along. We have a clearer picture of what's going on there after Phase 1B and then revamp our efforts after we have a clearer picture of the treatment plant. And in the interim, just some minor fixes here and there to the current facilities, no major expenditures. So until we get further along with the treatment plant, it was kind of a holding pattern.
I think that covers it all. Mr. Mayor, did you want one more comment and then I'm going to make a motion to adjourn?
Besides the 10,000 in Public Works Administration, you have 30,000 in capital projects for the same Public Works building improvements. So it's, we have, Public Works Building Improvements. Isn't that Public Works Building? Isn't that Public Works Building?
Mr. Wilson.
Oh, that's the blacktopping.
Mr. Wilson.
That's for paving, correct. And that was the line item previously that those monies had come out of, so.
You can't have everything.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Wait, wait a second.
Opposed?
Did you pass the budget? Need to.
He motioned adjourned, adjourned. You can't pass.
The past five people suggest.
I withdraw my motion to, to adjourn. I will make a motion rather to.
Need a second.
Pass the budget as we went over it now, as staff understands it, and whatever we have to do with the public and all that stuff. Do I have a second? All in favor? Nobody in favor?
Wait, you made the motion there.
To do whatever, yeah.
Do we have a second?
I did.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor. Opposed?
We're back in session?
Yeah.
We're back in session, no questions. Now, I'm, so we made the move to approve the budget, right? To let him go ahead with the final budget and put it out for the public. Right?
That's your motion?
Okay. No, we made that motion. It's done. It's done. Now I'm making a motion to adjourn.
No, they, nobody heard, nobody heard the motion.
That's the budget.
Who seconded it?
Who seconded?
Sizmarzki.
Sizmarzki seconded it, and everybody says, yeah.
To approve the budget, Mike?
Yes.
Right. But they didn't hear it.
That's fine.
They're yapping away, that's why.
How about, since we're spending money, we can just take a roll call and make it official? Since we.
Let's have a roll call on the budget as.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Shaki.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Just one more thing. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Done.
Do we have a second? I didn't hear.
Yes, I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against, and I'll kick 'em. Motion carries. Good night. Sweet child.